Can we unmute our, if you guys know how to mute your microphones while Sally's talking, or anyone said that will help because there is all sorts of ambient noise. I've got some here in my office as well, so I just have to do anything else. Sally, go ahead.
Yeah, so I am going to share my screen. Can everybody see my screen? Well, I give you thumbs up. So I'm going to share my screen and take it over here. So, so good evening and welcome to the first Zoom meeting for student programs and services. And thank you to our teachers and nurses who joined up today. Don't worry, it's my first Zoom meeting too, so this is a journey we're going to take together. Just like our title of our presentation today, a plan, our journey. We have a plan for today and it's a journey and we'll figure this out together. So it'll all be okay. So for the next hour and a half, we aim to provide you an overview with an update on the implementation of the district learning plan. So I'm going to start tonight with a quick overview that will highlight some of the aspects of the Weatherfield Public Schools Distance Learning Plan. As you can see, I've invited our nurse supervisor, Chloe Bobrowski, to talk about the important aspects, our nurses offer to, I'm sorry, our important support that our nurses are offering to our students and our families during this pandemic. We then are going to be hearing from some of our wonderful teachers from all levels. We're going to start with the high school teachers, then the middle school teachers, and elementary school. They will share some of their perspectives of the incredibly important work they're doing each day with students and families. When we talked about doing about six or seven minutes per person, we can stay on a tight schedule or we could very easily be here all night. But I'm sure that many of you have been looking at screens for most of the day. So the COVID crisis really quickly disrupted our personal lives in addition to our school schedules, our routines, and our expectations. So I was fortunate to have led a small but really mighty committee of educators to discuss a lot of the what ifs for distance learning on March 12th and a few days prior to that. And right before we had the closure of schools. And thinking back to March 12th, we had a lot of what ifs. A lot of these conversations were what ifs and we all wondered and we actually had conversations about we didn't know if distance learning would actually come true. It's hard to believe that that was just over a month ago and we're now five weeks into distance learning. And I'm really proud to say that many of the what if conversations that we all had in that room that day have really come true. In fact, I believe that the initial distance learning plan set forth by that committee and a lot of other collaborators was an important foundation for our successful distance learning model today. So I want to remind you that distance learning does not simply replace in-school building learning. In fact, it's very, very, very different as we're all finding out. But it's really clear that our staff is 100% committed to ensure that students are engaged and students are learning well at home. However, what I want you to remember today and which still rings true is that we're all learning this together. Teachers, administrators, support staff, students, and parents. And I'm sure all of you in your personal lives, each day brings new challenges, but we're working on this together. And we continue to refine our teaching and learning through this distance learning plan. It really is a journey. And each week continues to bring us reasons that we really want to celebrate and amazing things that are happening with our students and their families and new challenges that we continue to work together to solve. So this screen talks about some of the priorities or the things that we're emphasizing during our distance learning plan. So it's important to remember that priority one is really connecting to students and families. The very first thing we want to do each day and always is to connect with students and families and generally ask them, how are they doing? Are they healthy? Are their families healthy? How's quarantine going? How are they reacting to quarantine? And how are they doing with distance learning? Because we want to be able to connect and really build those strong relationships. Once we've done that, it's really priority two is to remember that each student has a unique story. This has always been true in public education, but this is especially true during a crisis like COVID. Our staff is working collaboratively with support staff and families to better understand each family's unique situation and to help meet those specific learning needs. We can't make any assumptions. So an example of that is that some of our pre-K teachers and our special education teachers are working on a coaching model with parents. We have some students that are able to utilize Chromebooks or computer devices. And so we're working on a coaching model to help students access educational opportunities without computer devices. And thirdly, after we check in to see how our students and families are doing, after we have a personalized approach, we can then engage them in meaningful learning tasks that ensure that all students are learning and developing those essential skills. So a personalized approach and strong relationships with students and families are really a must and those are priorities here in Weatherfield. We must not, we must not overestimate the challenges that our families and students are facing throughout this pandemic. I'm sure that we can all share our own personal stories of how illness, financial hardship, and stress are impacting our families, our friends, and our colleagues. And in fact, many people and many of our students and our staff members say they're okay, but that's not necessarily true. We're all struggling with this new normal because it's very new and very different to all of us. So one of the things we continue to focus on when making decisions is to look through the lens of equity. Equity is a topic in education for a long time, but even more so during this epidemic and not only in Weatherfield, across the state and across the nation. It's important that all students have access to education and we're working incredibly hard to ensure that this happens for all students. And we really recognize that each student requires different supports to be successful, especially during distance learning. At the primary grades, today you're going to hear from a first grade teacher. And there's an incredible amount of support and structures that parents must offer to our youngest learners. There are many families where we have worked with parents that are now required to teach their students in what we call their spare time. It's really hard to balance. So thank you to all those really engaged parents because it's incredibly hard. And thank you for all, thank you to all our teachers and staff who make themselves available at all different times in the day to meet with students. We have older siblings who are working full-time as they are the only person employed in their household right now. We have families with four children learning at home, all at different schedules with different learning needs. We have new software programs that teachers, students, and parents are all learning together. And sadly, we have members of our community who have passed. In addition, we have staff members, students, and parents who are currently sick with COVID. So each family has a unique story and we really aim to personalize our approach to help families and students during this difficult time. And those are really important things to remember during our, as part of our plan. So I want to take a few minutes to highlight some of the tenants of our distance learning plan. It's a robust document, but there's a few things I want to highlight. First of all, flexibility is a key. We understand that there's no longer, it's no longer realistic to assume that all students will be having science at 10:00 to 10:45 each day due to those stressors that we just discussed. So we have an asynchronous model, meaning that learning does not happen at the same time for everyone. We have flexibility. However, within that asynchronous model, we do have teachers that are creating synchronous meetings through Google Meet that allows them to connect with students, build culture and climate, and encourage students to join if they're available at that time. We don't expect perfection. As we said, we're learning this all together. We must all have a growth mindset and understand that together we can figure this out. And it really has been a journey and will continue to be a journey as we learn more about it. Administrators, teachers, support staff, nurses, and students, parents, we're all collaborating and designing a learning plan that will support our unique learners. So it's all about collaboration. We expect that all students participate in distance learning and we're tracking engagement data for all students. We'll share a little bit of that in a minute. Each school has an engagement team consisting of the principal, nurse, social worker, and psychologist. And they work collaboratively with the teacher and family to help them overcome possible barriers and to create a personalized plan to support the student. As you know, Chromebooks have been an essential tool to our success. However, both staff and students are finding the need to find a balance between on-screen learning and off-screen learning. And key to the plan, most classrooms are using Google Classroom to communicate with students. This allows teachers to assign learning tasks and provide feedback on collected work of samples. In the younger grades, many of the teachers are using Seesaw or another software that's similar. And feedback, feedback's really important as teachers are no longer working side by side with students all day. So as I mentioned, it's really a journey, so it's essential for parents and students to communicate and collaborate with their teacher to ensure that we're working together to meet the needs of each family. So I'll talk a little bit about engagement data. We, as I mentioned, we're tracking engagement data and how engaged students are with their learning process. So this shows us that we really have an incredibly high student engagement across the district. Over 85% of our students have been engaged for over 85% of the distance learning days. So this data includes a small percentage of students that who have had up to three days where they had non-engagement codes or, but that's really to allow for, it's a small percentage of that 85. And reflective of illness are reasonable reasons why students may not be engaged in school for that particular day. So we're incredibly proud of that high engagement, but also continue to focus on that 14% of students that need some assistance with engaging. Based on the guidance from the Commissioner of Education provided last week, we recently shared some guidance on grading and feedback. As you know, in grades pre-K through A, we tried to really strike a balance between providing feedback to students and parents about learning. We're recognizing that we are in a crisis. We would not be using a distance learning plan unless we were in a crisis situation. And we don't want it negatively impact our students or families who are under unimaginable stressors. So we believe that our students, we believe that this focus allows us to continue to positively engage with our students, engage them in learning, and focus on supporting our learners during this time. At the high school, we also recognize that students have to earn credits for graduation. Thus, they'll continue to have graded assignments. Report cards will be indicated as either a pass, pass of distinction, an incomplete, or a fail. However, transcripts sent to higher rated institutions will continue to have letter grades on them. So I want to thank everyone for all the informal feedback we've already received. And this has been really important during the last five weeks as we monitor and adjust. I wanted to let you know that next week we will be sending out a survey to both staff and families, looking for honest feedback. We want to use this information to continue to monitor and adjust our approach to distance learning. So we hope to have a high response rate with some more feedback next week. And gratitude. I want to express our gratitude for the entire Weatherfield Public School family. Again, we had a framework for distance learning just over a month ago. However, distance learning is being successful due to the dedication and desire of all our stakeholders to make this happen. And today is Administrative Assistance Day, so a special shout out to our administrative assistants and the administrative assistants across the district for the amazing work. We couldn't be as effective or efficient without all your help. So speaking of brave and inspiring healthcare workers, in a minute, I'm going to turn this over to Chloe Bobrowski, our nurse supervisor, and have her provide an update on the role of nurses during distance learning. After Chloe, she's going to turn it over to our dedicated teachers. John Martin will start us off from the high school. And they will go down, they have an order of presenting. And our teachers will be sharing out some of their personal perspectives on distance learning for about six or seven minutes each. Well, our teachers have a lot to share. As I said, we could probably be here all day with some really engaging and interesting conversations. So if possible, I'd like to not get into too much discussion right away because I wanted to give everybody a chance of who was invited on the call to give them a chance to talk. So if we could hold most of our discussion to the end and really listen to our great, to our nurse supervisor and our teachers share their perspectives. I've given them these essential questions to kind of start from and have asked them to share a wide perspective of their experience, both personally, their colleagues, their students, to share. Our hope is that you will have a broad perspective of what distance learning can look like at different levels and a snapshot of some of those pictures. So with that, I'm going to close my screen and turn it over to Chloe.
Hello? Can everybody see me okay?
Yep.
Oh, good. Well, thank you for inviting me to this meeting tonight. I really appreciate having the time to spend and to speak with all of you. And I'm very happy to share the school nurses' perspective and experiences as we left our schools. We had no idea on March 13th that we would be lacking all of our personal protection equipment and disinfectant wipes and hand sanitizers in our buildings and not returning ever again. So just realizing that we weren't going back into schools was really a blow, but we have adjusted. As healthcare experts in our school environment, we serve as an essential bridge between healthcare, public health, and educational systems. We've always been essential in infectious disease surveillance even prior to COVID-19. We have school-located immunization compliance efforts. We identify and intervene for students' physical and mental health concerns. We perform health screening as well as providing the essential support that students and our families rely on. School nurses have the comprehensive health expertise and are in a unique position to address issues that are not always recognized in an educational setting. And we're very proud to be able to collaborate with everyone in our town, including Board of Ed members and the administrative staff in order to, especially looking forward, planning for a safe re-entry into our schools, whenever that will be. I know that this is a very uncertain time, but most likely what we're going to see when we do get back is going to really include a tremendous amount of planning. So we feel that we have the skills that are paramount and would like to be collaborating with the administrative staff during that time. Yeah, so Sally had put out this slide about what are the, some of the things, how do nurses connect and build and maintain relationships with families? What's the same? What's different? What's hard? What are you proud of? And I can speak to all of those from the nurses' perspective. As Sally did also mention, nurses are part of the engagement teams and the crisis teams. As members of the crisis teams, we do realize that we can be very essential for stepping up when it's relying or assisting families, public information sharing. So I know that we've all had a, we've all been placed into those, those places in the school system. As, as members of the engagement team, as we look at some of these A&E students, we know that some of it is device-related perhaps, but also could be some health relations. And also with the engagement, as we approach engagement, each student, we look to see what kinds of relationships are already in place and have been built with a student. And sometimes it's with the social worker or the, or the school psychologist, but many times it does involve the nurse. So when it seems like there's been exhaustive efforts from the teacher or we discuss it as a team. So if it looks like the nurse has identified as the one point person to reach out to these families, we've been able to do that. For instance, if there was a health issue, and that has happened already, where there may be some sensitive public health or sensitive private health information, we have a cloud-based electronic health documentation system, which we were able to, and we were able to engage with that system while at home. So anything that we do, any type of response, we're able to put that into our documentation system, private from any kind of Google Doc that might be shared when it, you know, this is against HIPAA or FERPA privacy laws. Also, you know, we are still working with registering kindergartners. We're able to engage with our parents and have them, and receive their health information and their physical if they have them. We do realize that in COVID, during this time of COVID, that it may be difficult for having some of these kindergarten health records locked. Well, they certainly can't be mailed to the school right now, but at least giving them access and how to email or scan these health assessments to the nurse. Also continuing to remind parents in sixth grade and 10th grade that they also have required health assessment records that need to be submitted to the school as mandated by the Department of Education. We are currently looking for guidance from the commissioner as school nurses to see if we are going to be able to obtain a waiver or at least a grace period because it may, we know this is going to be a hardship. So we are working on that right now. Also, we're just communicating like never before. We're thinking about the fall. We're thinking about, I've, I've made some relationships with additional vendors that I've never really worked for for health supplies, trying to really find the best price and the best value for taxpayers' dollars. Also, we need to really invest in good tools such as the monitors because once again, in the fall, we really don't know if we're taking everybody's temperature. We don't know how many masks we, we will need in the fall. But as, as things progress, we're staying on top of it and we're thinking about the planning phase. And, you know, the nurses are really trying to stay on top of the most recent information on COVID-19. It changes every day. So we are really trying to stay on top of all the information that's coming out from the Department of Public Health, the American Health, Health Department, I'm forgetting how, how to say it, legal issues involved with health and, and the educational system. So we're really preparing ourselves with to really update and keep as on top of information as possible. But I, you know, the nurses are excellent. They're really working hard. They're getting creative. I know that one of our nurses has already made a YouTube video and went to the schools. She's made an amazing slide presentation on the topic of sleep, which is really important that we, you know, let families, you know, try to remind families that they need, still need the structure, they still, how important rest is. So I'm really proud of that. The nurses at the high school are still engaging with students that are post-concussed and how they're engaging with their distance learning. There's been surgeries that we wanted to follow up with so that we're prepared maybe coming back in the fall if there's requirements for accommodation. You know, there's still work with our policy and protocol books. And we're just, we're just really engaging as much as possible every single day. So I just wanted to kind of give you an update. I don't know if there's any questions for me, but we're doing it. Oh, I did want to mention particularly, we are going to become, we are infection control monitors. There are going to be some additional food distribution sites opening up in the very near future. So the school nurses will be the infection control monitors at this site, not particularly distributing the foods to the family, but actually monitoring the distribution site for infection control practice. We have people coming in that are going to be approaching cars or even approaching people who may walk up because we're anticipating either cars or walk-ups for food. So maintaining the safety of these workers, including proper PPE, proper, you know, wearing the gloves and the mask, maintaining a social distance, not only with the people that arrive to these food, food distribution sites, but also with each other. The nurse will be there to monitor the health of the workers to make sure that they're arriving healthy, not coughing, not sneezing. We're not, we won't be, God bless. But we're, you know, we won't be necessarily taking temperatures, but we can at least identify if there seems to be a problem, we can send that worker home if they're not really safe enough. And we have to assume wide transmission of COVID-19. So we want to make sure that the people who are going to the cars or approaching people maintain that six-foot distance. And people forget. So, you know, you kind of need people to look at other people and how they're performing and so to maintain the safety. So these nurses will be at the additional sites when they open up as the monitors. We are training them for appropriate donning and donking of PPE, making sure that they don't touch their masks with their gloves. When, how often do they need to change their gloves? Really, not that often. We can use hand sanitizers. The use of physical barriers, you know, the better ways for traffic to flow. So there's a lot of things that we're involved in and this has just been my overview and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chloe. Okay, who's up next?
There we go.
Got it.
Hope you actually can hear me now. There we go. So my name is John Martin. I am an English, I'm an English teacher at Weatherfield High School. I'm also Weatherfield Public Schools Teacher of the Year and I think the only one on this video call that got a fresh haircut for today's meeting. So I'll just start with that. So, oh, Mike still got one too. Good job, Mike.
Not bad.
So we're just starting today. Obviously, obviously we've been, we've been in the, we've been in the distance learning realm for a number of weeks now. I just wanted to give you guys an update on the high school side. First, I teach, just as a little bit of background, I teach juniors and seniors, but I've also reached out to our social studies department and our English department to get updates from them as well. Biggest thing, so to start with building relationships. And Pam Harrison, who's also our school psychologist, is going to hop in with each of these questions as well. We're going to kind of tag team this one. So in a lot of ways, building relationships has been the same, especially with families. I've been in front of this webcam recording YouTube videos to my parents who kind of want to hear your voice instead of getting a long email. I'm still, I'm still working with students on a day-by-day basis on Google Meet and on Google Hangouts. So actually, while this meeting was going on, I had a senior that was texting me on Google Hangouts earlier. So we're, we're keeping that constant line of communication open. We're, I'm still doing parent contact through newsletters, individual emails, individual phone conferences. I've even gotten on Google Meet with a parent right now who had a lot of questions about FASCA, so was kind of like just answering some questions on the college process. Pam, I know you are, something to say about site.
Yeah, let me jump in right there. So I'm Pam Harrison. I'm the school psychologist. And I reached out to the special education department as well as the school counselors to kind of get some feedback from all of them as well to preparing for this evening. There are so many things that we've been able to do that are really just exactly like we've done in the past, including our counselors have been able to have junior reviews, which is for all of our junior students. And our special education teachers have been able to continue working with our students. And from the social worker and psychologist's point of view, we've been able to kind of pick up right where we left off with having our one-on-one meetings, but just not in person. But we're able to do very similar like this with Google Meet or Google Hangout.
But some things do look different. The biggest thing is there are some question marks. When a student, when we're having trouble with engaging a student at the high school level, usually that student is still in class. You can pull that student aside or go find them in a study hall or at lunch and kind of talk to them, kind of figure out on a face-to-face basis what's going on in a way that we can help. And when a student is not accessing distance learning or having difficulty accessing distance learning, there's a lot of question marks for the teachers and also for all of our staff as because it's like, it's like they're not in class. And I'm spending a good amount of time making phone calls and sending messages and emails and it's, it's sometimes hard to engage those, those students. And Pam, I know at, on the school counseling side, you guys are seeing some of the same things.
Right. So we have our weekly attendance meeting, our engagement meeting on Mondays to kind of look over the previous week. And, you know, we follow up with when the teachers share concerns to the school counselors as far as students who aren't engaging. And then we then, you know, try to reach out to the parents and the students as well.
We're finding that sometimes students may not be responding to one teacher or one class, but they may have a special connection with someone else. And so we really try to capitalize on that and help them become more comfortable in this environment because distance learning is new for all of us. So I think some of the kids are really struggling with making those connections in this way when they're used to the face-to-face in the classroom.
And as the COVID-19 crisis changes on a day-to-day basis, a lot of times our students' family situations are changing on a day-to-day basis, whether a student's hours are getting increased dramatically or whether a parent loses a job or whether a parent or they become sick or ill. So it's a constant, it's a constant communication and just trying to keep those doors open as much and for as long as we can is really the most important thing because in our situation at the high school, we are dealing with young adults. So they can, it's very much, it's much more on them than their parents and their families. So it's, it's an interesting conversation to have. The feedback from students though has been that they're comfortable with technology. At the high school, we've been utilizing Chromebooks for, as a one-to-one for the last two years and inside classrooms for much longer than that. We've, the majority of teachers have been utilizing Google Classroom. And the only new thing are Google Hangouts and Google Meets that from the, from the feedback from my students are things that they want to have continue. They like the easy ability of if they're doing a homework assignment at 4:00 PM, to shoot me a quick message on Hangouts and I can answer it as opposed to waiting for an email. They like seeing the face-to-face of Meets. A lot of times I make my Meets optional. They're office hours, so it's their time of their class, so it's an hour block starting at 10:00 AM. And I have students hop on, honestly, they don't really have a ton of academic questions. They want to see their friends. They want to see me and they want to have that conversation. I search here for seniors where prom, senior picnic, those sort of seminal rites of passage were canceled because of this, because of the pandemic. It's a way for them to stay connected with the school community. And I think that's the most important thing in the distance learning, besides learning and besides making sure that they're socially, emotionally and physically safe, is making sure that they're still connected with each other. Because high school is just as much about their connection with each other as it is about the academics and their test scores.
And along the lines of, I can just jump right in. Along with the technology format that you mentioned, in the counseling department, we've also created some Google Voice, some new phone numbers for us so that we can call families and we can call our students without having to block our own personal number. So it's kind of, it's a real number that we can use through our own private Gmail account because I guess the Weatherfield accounts don't allow it. But it's been great to be able to text with parents and to be able to text with students as another way to communicate with them. And I think kind of what John was saying, it's just so true that our students really miss the face-to-face. And so it's funny, when I schedule appointments with kids, I let them know kind of what do you prefer? Do you want me to call you? Do you want me to text you? What would you prefer? And so many of them request the meet. I think they like to be able to see me and to see each other. So it's been, it's been a great way that I think we can use in the future, even after distance learning is over from COVID.
And the one, the feedback that I've been getting from parents is a lot of them are very thankful for the opportunity that their students are getting through this, like this really unsure time that there's something that's going to be a constant that Monday through Friday, a student will be able to log in and get assignments and be able to talk with their teachers, talk with their classmates, talk with their peers. And that's a constant in their lives because when we're in these sort of crisis scenarios, we look for those constants in our lives. Some parents are saying that they're getting, just as I'm sure all of us in this meeting are, with this new digital way of life, it's sort of like an innovation of emails where their math and their social studies and their English teacher are all sending them a newsletter, all pretty much at the same time or an update about, hey, they missed this assignment one day. So if one missed day, it equates to four to five pieces of correspondence, both to the student and to the parent. So some of them are like, it's overwhelming. Can somebody just please send one email? But I completely understand that. But they're really thankful for the opportunity. They feel that teachers at Weatherfield High School are giving them a high quality of education in unsure circumstances. And the thing that I'm hearing the most from parents is what I've been telling them all along is we're all in this together. Our goals are the same. We want our, we want our kids in Weatherfield to be happy, healthy and growing. And as long as we continue with that, with those as our tenants, we're going to, we're going to be really, really healthy.
Yeah, and I also think that our relationships with our parents are actually getting stronger as a result of COVID and the distance learning because we're having more real conversations with them kind of about, you know, the struggles that they might be having, you know, obtaining food or, you know, technology or with their schedule and trying to, you know, engage in a time when we're being as flexible as we are. So it's been kind of nice, kind of developing different relationships with them.
And I think going into that, I think that's, a lot of the transitions that we've had to make and changes we've had to make have been some of our greatest successes. I have made a push to give my students way, way more, I'm a student-driven teacher as it is, and to give them way more power. For instance, our girls in class, they're setting off on a month-long, I'll send you guys all the articles. They've written their initial articles for it and they're ready to follow up next week on a 30-day self-betterment project where I'm allowing them to kind of take on any activity that they want that's going to make themselves better. Some of them are reading for fun for the first time ever. I have one student trying daily yoga for the next 30 days. She's, she's finding some sort of inner calm. I have a student, I have a student that's rocking 100 pull-ups a day. I don't know how his arms have not fallen off yet. He's rocking 100 pull-ups a day for 30 days and they're tracking their progress. All the, all the, all the idea of self-betterment of how can I use this time when everything else around you could be falling apart to kind of make yourself better? Which I think is, is what we try to, which is what we try to teach with persistence, persistence throughout the entirety of Weatherfield High School. I really enjoy the self-pacing of it and students have as well. Students enjoy asynchronous learning where they do not need to wake up at 7:40 AM, that they can do things at their own pace. And for a lot of them, it's, it's been a, a conversation that I've been having with students and parents is this is directly informing the decisions that they're going to make later. A lot of them are deciding that I could work in front of a computer all day. That's something I could do and I can work at a desk all day because that's what I'm doing all day now. I don't need to have multiple venue changes. For some students that are going off to college next year, they're saying, I cannot be, I thought I was going to be able to go to an online school. I had a student that was thinking of the University of Phoenix and they're like, I cannot go to an online school. And I think having this sort of conversation allows them, allows them to make those choices. And in the literature classes, all of our English teachers, mostly because we can't, we have a hard time getting in the building, is they've been incorporating free choice units where students are allowed to choose their own text. And in reality, a lot of us have put the, put the onus and the ownership on the students of, hey, how do you want to showcase your abilities here? Do you want to create a video? Do you want to create a podcast about your book? With technology, we're really opening up the doors. And I think that's the thing that we're most proud of as a staff.
And I think along that, those lines, you know, from the special education standpoint, I think a lot of our classroom teachers are doing something that we've been kind of pushing them to do for so long is to really individualize and to differentiate. And they're doing it much more comfortably and it's becoming so natural that they are, in this model, have to be more individualized and having individual meetings with students. You know, our special education studies field classes, you know, in the past, it'd be more group work, are much more individualized. And so we're able to really see some kids show where we haven't always had that opportunity in the classroom setting. So it's been, you know, definitely advantageous in that way.
And really, our only challenges are as a basis of a platform. The lack, it's a lack of assessments within a single class lesson where if I pose a question and I get kind of a blank stare, it's an instant recalibration of what I'm thinking of doing. I mean, you don't get that in an asynchronous learning package because students are all doing it at different times. And in reality, it's, for me, I'm an English teacher. We work with empathy and humanity and that's reduced in when you're looking at a screen all day. And for those students that are choosing not to work during the parameters of when my classes are set, sometimes they're not learning from each other as often. They're not jumping into those classes discussions. That's something that is lost. And, but in reality, we're doing the best we can and we're all learning consistently every day. I can tell you I'm a better distance learning teacher now than when I was when I started. And there are some aspects of what I'm doing now that I will 100% take into the classroom whenever we can reopen.
And just to kind of highlight some positive things that the counseling department has kind of grown together in quite quickly and quite successfully. On the Weatherfield website, there is a link for a counseling resource webpage that we're keeping up to date with tips and techniques for students with parents or families. What's also been nice from the mental health point of view is that kind of across the country, people have come out and put together some webinars that have really helped us kind of broaden our own skillset and how we can be better at our jobs from our homes rather than from our offices. The school counselors really went quickly and adapted their junior review process so that they could do it from home and they're able to do it successfully. So that's just something that just never stopped and it's such an important part for our juniors. And, you know, kind of the one-to-one counseling support that we've been able to provide for our students, you know, it's just great to hear our students and to be able to see them face-to-face. And one last thing that I do want to point out, but definitely from the school counselors and from the special ed department, we are so incredibly thankful for our building-level administration. They have been so incredibly supportive and available and just present throughout all of this for our staff. And I don't think we could have been nearly as successful with our students and our families about that.
So with that, if you have any questions, I'm going to stay on for the entire meeting. So if you have any questions, either leave them for the end or ask me now.
John, I have a question for you. It's Bobby. I can't imagine that they're not engaged with both of you because it's really, I'm entertained here. But you said there was a lack of engagement at times. Is there a common reason or just like kids, are there personal reasons and individual reasons?
I think that's, if it's.
Oh, yeah, you'll start it, yes.
Yeah, if it's okay. What we're finding kind of across the board is that our kids who are not engaged in distance learning are also the kids who we struggle to engage with, mind the brick and mortar. These are, there are very few new cases of kids not engaged. And that tends to be from maybe a technology issue where they may not have internet in their home and we're working on that. And those are things that are still ongoing and we're definitely moving in that direction. But generally speaking, the kids not engaged in our distance learning, our kids that we struggle to engage with in, within the school setting.
Thank you.
Well, there are some unique situations and circumstances. I have a senior that is working at an assisted living facility that all of a sudden is pulling 35 hours a week, 40 hours a week during the school day because a lot of people have left and her, and her parents lost her job. So I had a conversation with them at about seven o'clock on a Tuesday on Google Meet, kind of talk about what education's going to look like for her. I think the biggest thing for us as educators is staying flexible, especially with our students that are having engagement issues, to get them on board. Because all it takes is for one teacher to get that student on board and then hopefully, hopefully, everything, everything else will fall into place. And for some of our students, it's simply just the need for reminders. I always tell my writers all the time, the easiest decision a reader ever has to make is to stop reading, is to put away the book. It's a very, very easy situation to have. And for a lot of our students, when I'm sitting here and I can stare at my television and my Xbox and a guitar behind me, it's easy to kind of stop the learning process. There are way more distractions at home. So it's a constant that as long as we are being proactive and making our assignments naturally engaging and being naturally engaging as, as teachers, because teachers, we all, we all work to engage, our students, our students will follow.
Evan, John, thank you guys so much. Just to keep us on a tight schedule, I'm going to, if we can unmute Diana and Matt, I'm going to turn over to the middle school for a little bit to share perspectives from middle school.
Sure. So I'm Matt Burlow. I'm an instrumental music teacher, grade seven and eight at the middle school. I teach band and orchestra. And Diana, I want to.
I'm a science teacher for seventh grade.
Okay. And, you know, we'll just kind of, I guess, start to talk about the same things at the middle school level. And Diana, you know, chime in whatever you want if I.
Can I just start with a positive? I would like to start there. I just have to say that the staff has come together at SDMS like I've never seen before. I had the pleasure or weirdness of being at the meeting that's still meant to plan distance learning and from the district level to administration to the teachers, everybody just came together. They did what they had to do. The paras are essential, the media, media specialists, ELL people just came together and they did what they have to do. And I just want to start with that because what we've done in the past, I don't even know how many weeks it's been now, is quite incredible. And the teachers and the staff just went with it. And I just want to start with that. Sorry, Matt, but I had to put it out there.
No, it's a great start. You know, a lot of the same stuff as John was saying, the initial rollout, I think, has been going pretty well. I've asked the kids, you know, a bunch of questions. I, in addition to assignments, I just kind of post like interesting questions, things I think that they might have fun with. So one of the questions that I asked was, you know, in the first week, how's it going? Should we do anything different? What was the best thing? Should everyone, what would, what's something that everyone should do that you liked a lot? And actually, one of the comments that got back was, you guys are doing a great job. So that was, and that direct from the students, that was a nice thing to hear from them. And I've got a lot of positive feedback, both from students and from families. We reach out in a lot of the same ways that we did before, the email. We had that star six, seven phone call thing, although that is a little difficult. I tried that with some success today and also with some failure. I think, you know, when it comes up as a blocked number, you know, sometimes people don't answer, but that is, that's the way. If you give them a message and eventually you'll catch up and you'll, you'll have space with them.
Just add, add on to that. Science just decided to do a weekly check-in with the kids and ask questions like roundabout, like who are they talking to? And, you know, are they exercising? And like 90% of the kids said, you know, the amount of work they had was fine. They were happy with, with the distance learning. I actually emailed some of the students who are really, really hard workers because I was like, let's, you know, take it from their perspective. And they have a lot going on in their life, so they weren't, you know, I was worried like, is it too easy? And, you know, they were happy with the amount of work and they were getting stuff done. So it's really been positive from the students and the parents. The parents have been amazing because we, we already had, you know, relationship with them before. They've been nothing but supportive. We're calling them if there's an issue and, you know, it's just, everybody's just pulling together. It's just been such a great and positive community. I will say in terms of the learning environment, as far as designing lessons, it's a little bit different with middle school than high school. It's keeping that engagement, getting them to come on. And the initial lessons were pretty basic. Because we're middle school and we're goofy, you know, we have to get, you know, we put videos of ourself on and there's teachers, myself included, doing TikTok videos or talking about silly things or playing games with them on Google Meet because they really miss that interaction. The funny thing about Meets is a lot of them are uncomfortable at the middle school age to come on. Once they're on, they're fine, but I think because they're at their house and I'm at my house, it just feels awkward. So that's been interesting. The other thing I just want to add, sorry, Matt, and then I'll let you.
No, we're sharing.
The feedback in terms of, middle school teachers have 100 kids and we're giving 100 assignments out a day. And right now, like I'd be going through all those assignments and it's, it's been a challenge to consistently give feedback and you want to be encouraging. And so I think with the help of Karen Marshall and Sarah, I know for myself, we've been using some new technology, whether it be Google Forms, like I just, because they're middle school kids, like if you put the answers later, they're not going to look. So Karen helped me figure out a way to use Google Forms so they get immediate feedback. And then I'm even asking them higher level questions because I'm sending them to a simulation or something rather than just having them do something and then not get immediate feedback because they're not going to go back and do that. Screencastify has been amazing just so we could have a conversation or teach a little bit or tell them about the lesson because they don't redirect. And I'm hoping they will gain problem solving skills because we're not there to say like, here's a pencil and have to do this or that. So it's been a big adjustment for teachers and the students. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, no, I'll piggyback right off that. I think, I think you're right about the direction reading thing, but I think part of that is, you know, developmentally, the age, you know, of the kids at the middle school. I've sent written directions. I've done an audio recording. I've done a video of what to do. And the majority of questions I get from kids are, what am I supposed to do? And that's, that's the age. If we were in school, it would be super easy. I would see the kid, they would see someone else do it. I'd point at their, their screen. I'd just mirror the thing, you know, on my board. We'd be done in seconds. But in this, it can take two or three days for everyone to understand, oh, oh, I'm just supposed to do that thing. So it takes a lot more time to answer simple questions. And that's one of the things I think initially that I found in those four days when we were kind of closed and we didn't exactly know what was happening. I put up what I thought was a super. was a super, super easy assignment and it was not. I mean, I got so many what and how and like, in my mind, I'm like, this will take me five to ten minutes in school. No way. It just, it wasn't a reasonable thing to ask and that really made me rethink what I'm asking the kids to do when they're at home and, and change my perspective a lot. It's hard, it's hard for them to engage this way, to make that adjustment at this age. And I say that, you know, not only as a teacher, as an instrumental music teacher, you have all kinds of issues that in school, piece of cake. Oh, your string broke? Two minutes later, I fixed your string. Your trumpet's not working, I fixed your trumpet. Well, I can't do that at home. And I can set up a meet like this, but then they have to get on it and they have to have their instrument on it and then if somebody's not there, you know, those things take a lot more time. And I think the biggest thing for me in, in dealing with this, that I see this distance learning and working with kids, in addition to whatever I'm dealing with at home, there's really, really serious stuff going on for the kids at home. And what I've experienced in terms of, you know, somebody does something one week, doesn't, and then what we find out is, well, they did it and then three or four people in their family are sick or somebody went to the hospital and that's why the work didn't happen. And, you know, that really changes the notion of feedback too because how do you say, you're doing, great, 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 where's your work, where's your work, where's your work? When, and there's a high probability of that what's happening is an extremely serious thing and we're asking a twelve or thirteen-year-old to deal with that.
Yeah, just to add on to that, I will say, it's something that John had said, because we are a team-based and it was something that I think Mr. Emmett made mention, that the parents were getting too much feedback. So luckily we are team-based, so we've switched it, so we appreciate any feedback where now we're just filling out a form all week and then we're having a meeting and we're sending out emails and UAs letting us know so that one person is calling or emailing because the parents were getting overwhelmed and the kids weren't checking their emails because they didn't know to check their emails. So it really, I mean, the collaboration between all the teachers is, is just so helpful. And to add to what Matt has saying, I think it's just brought everybody closer together and even with my students and the parents, the sad things that are going on, like Matt was saying, food insecurity, people getting sick, people moving else, you know, moving to a different location in mother's school for various reasons, it, it just tugs at your heartstrings. And to have the support of just meeting with a group of teachers and chatting still because it gets, you know, it does, it gets to you after a while because you want to do which, you know, anything you can for those kids. It really, like, I forgot the nurse's name, I apologize, Chloe, I think, like what she's doing is just so helpful for food, just basic, simple things that makes you thankful for what you have.
Yeah, and the last thing I would chime in with, and like Sally said, I could easily talk all night about this sort of one-on-one platform. I a hundred percent sympathize with any parent who's trying to work at home with kids at home. I have two young children, I've got a two-year-old and a two-month-old. And the original plan, although what differences a plan make at this point, was that my wife would stay home with the two-year-old and my, I'm sorry, with the two-month-old and the two-year-old would go to daycare, but that's not a thing right now. So he is home and the challenge that I find because with that age, he's right at the age where he can cause mischief, must be supervised a hundred percent of the time, but does not understand that daddy is working. So when I'm trying to do something, if I start to play an instrument, he wants to come see me. And then what happens if he tries to come see me and he can't because I'm working, well, he cries and then he starts to act out. And then my wife is trying to deal with the two-month-old and there's a crying baby and if I'm trying to do a recording or a chat session, I have to say, I'll call you later. And that, that's a really complex thing, even though every, like Diana said, everyone is working together, it really is going well, it's really hard to deal with and it really, it puts a lot of constraint and limits on what I can do and when I can do things.
I think a lot of teachers overall are finding it hard to balance work and life. I thought online teaching wouldn't be as time-consuming, it's extremely time-consuming and it's very clerical. You know, you're constantly, we're redoing all our lessons that we just did last year, we're remaking lessons and I have three people to work with, but you're posting lessons, you're checking work, you're answering emails, like it's a lot more work than I thought it would be and different age groups, like Matt has young children, I have college-age students, but I have elderly parents and in-laws and, you know, there's so much other going on. It's hard to balance and I'm speaking for all the teachers at SDMS, I think that's hard.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. A lot going on and it's a lot harder than you'd think, you know, and originally I was thinking, you know, when my son was, when my daughter was born, wouldn't it be great if I could stay home and see her for all this time? And it's amazing. But also at times I'm like, I wish that I could sleep or there was daycare going on, but you know, it's just
And just one other thing, if I don't, if you don't mind, I want to give a shout-out to the students because they have done amazing in the short time, they've really just, they just, they've done really, really well. But they too are, you know, even the students who don't have any issues, like one day I forgot to assign something to one student and she was so happy, I'm like, just take a break. Like her mom was just like, you don't know what a nice thing you did for my daughters. She was so happy because the kids are really stressed and we often forget about that sometimes. And at the middle school level, like Matt said, they're twelve, thirteen years old, we're asking a lot of them to do this, so I'm just so impressed with, with the kids.
Yeah, absolutely. I've gotten some flawless, absolutely flawless recordings from the kids for some of the assignments and that, that's a real highlight to get to hear that and hear them play in this distance way, it's awesome.
Diana, Matt, thank you guys so much for sharing, sharing your personal stories and I'm sure those mirror also the stories of our parents. I saw Kelly nodding her head there, making some connections, so. So I'm going to turn it over to Krista, Karen and Ryan to introduce yourselves, you can go, you know, one at a time, whatever works for you, but if the three of you want to unmute your microphones.
Krista, Mary, Juski, the school social rep, Emerson Williams.
I'm Ryan, who was rated sixth-grade teacher at High Press School.
I'm Karen Wilson, first grade at Webb. Um, I'll go first because I just want to kind of get it over with. We did practice this before and it got to just under seven minutes, so I'm going to try and just bring that up. So obviously whether we're physically present in school or doing distance learning, it's always our goal to connect with students and build relationships with both them and their families. It's just that the ways in which we're connecting with them has changed and we need to be a lot more creative in how we do that. So for instance, morning meetings that were typically held every day in the classroom are still being held, but now it's on a Google Meet. Instead of Ms. Tuckworth greeting kids at morning arrival, now they're listening to her read bedtime stories every night on the school Facebook page. Instead of daily morning announcements being read over the loudspeaker, now it's a YouTube video that includes student and staff pictures so that we can stay connected from afar. Our staff members also created a bilingual photo message that reminded students just how much we miss and care about them. We've also been utilizing different tools that we've never used before to stay connected, like Google Voice, Google Chat and Google Meet. It's been really an all-hands-on-deck approach with student engagement, so all staff, including pairs and tutors, have been helping to reach students and get them engaged in their learning. Teachers have said that their connections with families have actually increased with distance learning because of how often they're checking in, helping them navigate technology, bringing assistance with assignments. Staff is also getting to know their students better by getting glimpses into their whole lives, so now instead of just hearing about their annoying brother at home, we're able to actually witness it. But because of video and voice technology, the lack of face-to-face interaction has definitely been a difficult adjustment for both teachers and students alike. Some hurdles that we've had with meeting student needs, teachers are definitely trying their best to continue to differentiate and make accommodations for students, like breaking down assignments with links or creating daily schedules to help maintain a routine, but a lot of work is also being put on family members. Access to technology was a hurdle that we seem to have overcome at this point, students in grades three through six are seeing Chromebooks, but that did leave some of our K through two students without anything except maybe a parent's cell phone to use. So we are very grateful that the district was able to provide iPads and Chromebooks to those younger students in need. We even had a team of second-grade teachers purchase a Chromebook for a student, which I thought was beyond amazing. Another hurdle has been supporting our special education students who in addition to juggling their classroom assignments, may also receive speech or counseling tasks and that can be overwhelming for them. Also the difficulty of engaging young learners on Google Meet without manipulative or sustaining their attention in video sessions can be challenging. I also don't know if you've ever googled met with a first grader, but you tend to need to take like Dramamine before doing that. I was showing you everything. Currently we have six students, more or less, the lack of engagement has been particularly concerning and these six students are all either open choice, they're minority students, they're EL, they're special ed, or they're free and reduced lunch. Some of the obstacles that they've faced, the lack of technology that we mentioned, lack of principal skill or support, or family members unfortunately being diagnosed with COVID-19. So we're definitely doing our best to support them through this and trying to keep them connected to their school community and engaged with their learning as best as they can. Some parent feedback that we had, we had a few parents email about our social emotional Google Classroom page that our SCL team created because we know that physical health is so important right now, but we can't let mental health fall to the wayside. So as part of our Google Classroom, we created a video series on YouTube called Coping to Corona that teaches kids coping skills. We also have Mindfulness Mondays and other YouTube videos about topics like stress management and perseverance. Some parents are trying to balance working from home like we were just talking about while building in movement breaks and while worrying about their family's health and safety and access to food and they're trying to teach their kids at the same time. So our teachers are definitely aware of these factors and they've been flexible and understanding about that. Most of the emails that our principal has received have been positive and only a handful have mentioned feeling overwhelmed with the digital platforms or with expectations being set too high. I've heard from parents who have multiple children at home across grade levels, finding that juggling the different learning platforms can be a challenge if they have a seesaw and then another kid on Google Classroom and then another kid doing like Google Live, that can be a tough thing to juggle. I've also had parents with kids who have special education services, they've reached out for help in finding ways to create a routine at home because we know that they benefit so much from that structure or to brainstorm ideas just to help make distance learning go smoother for them at home. Some student feedback that we've received, they're definitely enjoying seeing their teachers and friends on Google Meet and doing Google, uh, morning meetings on Google Meet. We've gotten a lot of participation in that from many of our classrooms. They also enjoy using choice boards because I think it gives them some control in what assignments they do. It also includes options for screen reactivities. Also navigating the different platforms has been a little stressful for older students who might be assigned to multiple Google Classroom and they also, like we had mentioned, I think John mentioned it, being overwhelmed by emails. And then some students are struggling to maintain normal sleep habits and bedtime routines and we're seeing that some kids are staying up later than they normally would during like a typical school year. For things that we're proud of, I would say for myself and many other teachers at Emerson, we've both loved and struggled with the technology. When it works, it's great, but that's not always the case. And I thought I was pretty tech savvy before starting distance learning, but I've actually learned a lot about using Google Classroom and slides and Screencastify and other things. And also seeing the collaboration of my staff members has been awesome, so people are offering to jump in and help whenever needed for tech support or trying to connect with a family, really is an all-hands-on-deck situation, which has been great. And then some of the hardest things is like we have, I think Diana had mentioned, just connecting from work and emails and screen time and trying to create that balance of work and home. I know that has been particularly difficult for staff with their own children, trying to give their kids the attention and support that they need while also being there for students and families. And in the beginning, I definitely thought it was a challenge to not have accessed any materials and trying to create lessons just from online resources, but that's definitely gotten easier since and I want to give a shout-out to John and Liz because they hooked us up with an everyday speech subscription. We had it before, but this was like an upgraded one and it's been wonderful to use as a resource. Overall, I do feel like we've had success with connecting and supporting students and families so far, but it's a continuous work in progress because family circumstances are constantly changing and making sure their basic needs are being met is definitely the main priority for many families right now. Was it seven minutes? Did I do it?
Well done.
Erin, would you like to go next or do you want to go next?
You can go ahead, I'll say the youngest for last.
Good, there we go.
The youngest kid.
Okay, I'm Bonnie Boonroyd, I'm a sixth-grade teacher at High Press. So how have we built and connected with students? So at the beginning of the distance learning, back on March seventeenth, which is crazy to think that it's been that long, we set up a Google Meet with every student and family. We had done a signup genius, so we had really gotten students to come on and talk to them about the expectations and answer any questions about what distance learning was going to look like. That was with both students and parents. Currently, we keep our Google Meet link open from nine o'clock until one-thirty every day so students can come on. We also schedule the lessons with them that are optional and as we said, it's, you know, not mandated that the kids come at certain times, but some kids just kind of want to pop on to say hi to you. We also have a morning meeting that we do with our homeroom class every day at nine o'clock. But again, that Google Meet gives us, those students, the opportunity to chat with their teacher and continue building that relationship that we've established since the beginning of the year. So what's the same? So we continue to give students feedback on their assignments. This looks different, obviously it's not on, you know, in person, it's a Google Doc. This can assist students in improving their daily work. We use our morning meeting time to have students share what's going on at home and continues to build that relationship as well and that sense of community that we've established since the beginning of the year. What's different is not seeing students in person is obviously very different. The way that we reach out, a lot of you mentioned, you know, using Google Voice, email, texting with parents as well, using that Google Voice feature. Sometimes it's difficult to get in contact with students. I know a lot of people have talked about that already tonight, but we found that phone calls or texting really tend to work better, especially for parents that are not responding to email or students that don't always check their email. And that's something, like a lot of you have talked about that, you know, the kids do feel overwhelmed with the amount of emails because every time Google Classroom gives them a new assignment from three or four different Google Classroom platforms, there's a new email that they have to kind of go through. The biggest hurdle to meeting student needs is that immediate feedback, the difficulty getting in touch with students and assisting them with their learning. Because students can work at any time of the day, sometimes it's difficult to give feedback immediately because you might be working at nine or ten o'clock at night and you're kind of done checking the work and then you have to check it the next morning. So there's a little bit of that pressure that sometimes is self-induced where you feel like you want to give that feedback for students, but because they're working at all different times, it can be difficult to get back to them right away. Something else that's difficult with student needs is we're setting up those Google Meet lessons for students to attend and especially those students that really would benefit for that small group instruction, they don't always come to those Google Meets. So whether they told us they're going to or, you know, we schedule those in advance, they don't always come to those, so that's a hurdle that we're trying to deal with as well. Feedback from students, so again, we hold that morning meeting every day at nine o'clock. Students love seeing their friends at that time, we do an activity every morning, they love that interaction with their classmates that they're not really having outside of that. We provide students a sample schedule of how they could manage their day. They gave the students a routine and a structure, many of them found that helpful as well and they gave us good feedback on that. And they really just miss that routine and that structure that a normal school they really brings and they really respect that to us as well. For feedback from parents, overall, we receive mostly positive feedback from parents in terms of our communication. Our team updates parents weekly about assignment completion, that's usually either like on a Friday or Saturday. We have some students that are not completing work on a regular basis, so we might be contacting those parents more frequently, as often as daily if they're not completing the assignments just so those kids can stay on track and the parents are aware of that as well. We've also, some parents have felt that their kids are working too long on assignments, so we may have adjusted the workload for those students, especially for those parents that are juggling maybe two or three kids at home and then they're working themselves at home. So we've really given them some feedback about routines and structure and how they can manage those assignments. So how have we adapted teaching and learning in the transition to distance learning? So we really have to modify the pace of our lessons, so really we're expected to be teaching a thirty-minute lesson each day. So obviously the pacing and the way that the curriculum's going to look is going to be different for each subject. We know that we're not going to be able to get through as much curriculum as we would be able to if we were in school. be able to if we were in school. Um, a lot, a lot of you have mentioned Screencastify, that's really changed our lessons for the better where we can record a lesson video, but teachers have preferred to use, um, Google Meet and record themselves that way as well. But that way, because students are working at different times of the day, they can watch the lesson video, and I think it's not that, no matter if they watch a video, if they talk with you in person, if they're reading directions on a slide, still the most common question tends to be, I don't understand the assignment or what the directions, because they're really just not, if it was something in school, it'd be completely different, like that's us. Um, we also provide students with exit bullets and entrance, uh, to get kind of to help us with engagement as well. Um, it monitors all that information and we're able to communicate that with parents too. So, what's hardest for us? Um, the hardest thing for us is really sometimes feeling attached to that computer. If the students are sending an email or they're needing to chat about the assignment, then we feel like we want to get that feedback, but it's maybe, you know, outside of the time that we're sitting at our computers. So, kind of that feeling of you're, you're really attached to the computer and you want to be able to get that feedback. It's hard to grade or establish a true understanding of material because some students are homeworking independently, and some students have a lot of parent support, so it's difficult, and I know we're not grading now, but it's difficult for us to kind of assess if students are really understanding something because parents might be supporting more than others. And one thing that we're kind of cautious of moving forward is, now that students know that they aren't receiving grades, just making sure that that feedback is meaningful for them so they can move forward in their assignments and making sure that they know what our suggestions are, how they can improve in their assignments, because they really need something to be able to work for, that, like motivation for kids is really important. Um, so what we kind of put in place was a Fun Friday where students have, somebody, I think you mentioned those choice boards, where they have a different menu of options that they can work on. Sometimes those are screen free activities, they're still curriculum related, but they're a little bit more, um, outside of working on the screen time. And kids can, um, if they're done with their work by Thursday, what we've done is we've done this Fun Friday where kids can then choose to do these different choices. And kids that don't have their work done, they're going to be working on that on Friday almost like a catch-up day, and that tends to work pretty well for those kids that seem overwhelmed during school day. And then what are we most proud of? Two things that I think we're most proud of, one is the collaboration that I've seen among teachers, especially among grade levels, um, within schools, but also outside of schools. So, in terms of sixth grade, I've worked with other teachers that teach the same content as I do, the same curriculum, science and social studies. So, really that, um, collaboration with other staff members in other buildings and within our team level as well. And something else I'm really proud of is the students. I'm really proud that they've really taken this on, it's a huge adjustment for them, but many of them have just done such a tremendous job, and I'm really most proud of them and how much work and dedication that they've put in and the perseverance it's taken to engage in this distance learning.
Okay, I'm, I'm last, I guess. I have lots of notes, so I'll try to talk really quickly, because I'm sure everyone is getting tired. Um, everyone has said exactly what I have been thinking and what I jotted down in my notes, so I apologize for any, um, anyone hearing the same message over and over again, but I would also like to start by thanking the administration, the district, um, my colleagues, the kids, our curriculum specialists. I feel like everyone at this time has been so flexible and helpful, and you just have to send a quick email or pick up the phone, and everyone is there to help, um, including the parents. So, I am grateful for that flexibility and just the teachers working together at whatever pace we're most comfortable at. Um, how are the primary teachers connecting with kids and families? Well, we've tried to kind of take what we, the, the communication that we had already established in school and just build on from that. Um, the very first day of distance learning, like Ryan said, we, all we did all day long was call every single family on a video chat. How are you? Um, I miss you. How, how are you doing? What are you doing at home? Are you going outside? How do you feel? Um, and that kind of was the bridge to further communication. Um, we just want to show our primary kids and their families that we are there for them. We care that they got a new stuffed animal from Amazon. We care that they got a new tent and they're reading books in it. We want to know about their cats and dogs. So, we're trying to connect with them on their level and show them that we're still interested in what they're doing, and once we have that, we can, um, introduce the academics and, and continue in that way. Um, what is the same? We're trying to connect with kids and care for them. Um, we're con, we're continuing to communicate, um, like the other teachers have said, we're using email, phone calls, Google Meet. Um, there's a great app called Remind, which allows you to text families back and forth, and they don't have your cell phone number, so if there's a parent that's hard to reach, you can just send them a quick text message. Um, we're really trying to be flexible and keep that communication open at all times, um, and engage our little kids at their level, um, which can be hard across the commu, a computer. What is different? Um, we have had to change our mindset and realize that technology is the driving force behind all of our decisions. How will we connect? How will we stay connected? How can we teach something to a little first grader that is not in front of us? Um, and how do we keep them engaged for more than three minutes? Um, when they're, they have a TV at their house and they have their stuffed animals and, and all of that going on. Um, we're finding that not all of the curriculum can be taught, um, virtually, like hands-on math and science, so that is kind of a struggle for us. Um, what are the biggest hurdles? Technology. K to two do not have the same devices. Um, I know three and up all have a Chromebook, but K to two, some kids have their parents' cell phone, some kids do have a Chromebook, some families have nice computers, um, so that kind of varying in devices is very difficult, not only for the kids, but also for the teachers. Um, the first two weeks, I feel like we were just troubleshooting devices. Um, something might open on an iPad that doesn't open on a, on a cell phone, so that was really difficult in the beginning. Um, another hurdle I'm finding is that our parents have varied levels of involvement or proficiency. Some know exactly what to do on a Google Meet, how to mic, use the microphone, some are still trying to figure out how to get on a Google Meet, so that varying of proficiency. We're finding a lot of EL barriers, so English as a second language has been quite difficult, so a lot of our families don't understand what we're trying to, to tell them or to have them help their kids to do. So, we're trying to get older siblings to help, we're trying to get, um, family members that be able to assist our younger students, um, and help us to help them. Um, we're finding it difficult to differentiate for our little students, so, um, this is very quick and easy to do in the classroom, we can just grab a bunch of kids, um, show them something in a different way, but across the computer, you're not really sure who needs that and what's the best way to do that, um, not on the fly like in the classroom. Um, another concern is the inconsistent supplies in our households, so a lot of the older kids are on a Chromebook, all of their work is there. Well, we don't want our first graders typing a story, we want them writing on a piece of paper, so some families don't have the paper or the material, so that has been a little bit of a struggle, um, along with teachers not having the material. So, I live for my document camera at school, and I don't have one at home, so my son built me one. Um, so we're just trying to do anything we can to get guys. Um, let's see, what has the feedback been from the kids? They just want to see us. They miss us, they want to see us, they want to see their friends, so we're doing the Google Meet. Um, a lot of the primary teachers are not holding Google Meets every single day because it's very chaotic, um, but we're trying to do a one-on-one video chat with each student in our class or a very small group, um, just a few students at a time, because once one child gets off track, it kind of messes up the rest of the meet. Um, students like completing work on the computer, they like all of the different apps and technology that we're able to use. What's the feedback from parents? They are just so thankful. Um, they are grateful that we're being flexible during this time and that we're letting the kids do their work whenever they can. I have some kids that are upright and early at 7:00 AM and some kids that are doing their work at 10 o'clock at night, so the parents are very grateful for that flexibility. Um, what is the feedback, uh, other feedback from the parents, um, like you said, or like the other teacher said, some were very overwhelmed in the beginning, there were so many emails, um, so that has kind of dropped off a little bit, and I think they're, you know, appreciative of that. Uh, some are still overwhelmed, or they might be going back to work, or like one of the other teachers said, they have kids on different devices and different platforms, um, so it's kind of chaotic at home, and I think we just have to be very sensitive to that. Um, how have I adapted teaching and learning? Uh, well, I'm working very closely with my grade level partner, she is phenomenal, and we're kind of splitting the workload. Um, in primary, you don't have a team, you just usually have one or two partners, so the workload is, it's kind of overwhelming. Um, we learn in a very short time. I thought I was good at computers, like one of the other, um, people on here said, but I have learned so much in so, in so fast of a time. Um, several platforms that we'll take back into the classroom. Um, what has been the most difficult? Um, time management. So, I kind of asked our K to two team at Webb, about how many hours a day are you working? And the consensus was about nine to 12 hours a day, mostly 10 to 12. Um, that would be during the, the work week and then a lot more hours over the weekend. Um, the problem is that you don't know when to quit, or I don't know when to quit. Um, the computer is always there, so it's not like at school where you leave the classroom and you kind of say goodbye, that computer is always there calling you. Well, let me just do one more thing. Let me send one more email, like Ryan said, uh, oh, that student, it wants to know something. Um, it's very hard to unwind and shut it off. So, uh, my family has been bringing me dinner into, you know, into where my computer is and saying, Mom, it, that's it, enough is enough. But, so that's kind of been the, the biggest struggle. Um, the majority of the day is spent making videos and filming lessons, troubleshooting, creating lessons, so then most of the evening is spent giving feedback, sending digital stickers, or, oh, you did such a great job. Um, so, the, the work kind of piles up and it's a little snowball and it grows and grows and grows. Um, the other quick, I'm trying to go quick, um, juggling my own teaching and video chats while having my own two kids at home, I have a sixth grader and an eighth grader, so my eighth grader is coming in asking me about range mode and median, and I have no idea what he's talking about, and then I'm trying to talk to my first graders, and then my sixth grader needs a hot glue gun, so it's just really difficult to juggle all that. Now, I can't imagine having two tiny ones, so I'm just thankful my own kids can make their own food and kind of fend for themselves. Um, one of the other hardest things has been missing the kids. Um, just not seeing their faces and their smiles every day is, is quite difficult. And so, and on a positive note, what are we most proud of in the primary level? Um, we have learned so much so fast with technology, and things that I didn't even think I could ever do, I have had to figure out. I have had to YouTube it or rely on our curriculum specialist to, to teach me how to do it by tomorrow. Um, and that, that can carry over into the classroom, which is, which is what I'm most thankful of. Um, most of my kids have been engaged on the, on my platform, Seesaw, almost every single day, so that's very, um, very proud of that. Um, and that we have just kind of hit the ground running. When they said, school is closed and you have, you can't go back into your classroom, we said, okay, how are we going to do this? What's the best way to do it? And we're just doing it. Um, we're doing the best we can. And the last thing I'm most proud of is that some days I get on camera with my kids and I'm a mess and my hair is out of place and I don't care anymore. What matters the most is that they see me and I'm just plugging along, so I'm very proud of that. Um, so thank you. Thank you, everyone, for, for listening, and what everyone else said is basically, um, you know, the same, it just goes from those big kids down to the little guys, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, everybody else. If we can give everybody a virtual, uh, applause there. Um, you know, you guys did, uh, really are doing amazing job on the front line, and, you know, as I listen to you all talk, well, there's definitely differences in first grade compared to high school, you'll really hear a lot of themes and similarities across the different schools. Um, so, and thank you, guys. You guys are right on time, you guys are efficient, so thank you for that. Um, a few minutes for a few questions, uh, or discussion if we have any questions?
Yeah, Sally, if I could, please. Uh, I just want to put things into perspective here. You know, on, uh, Thursday, March 12th, I made the announcement that we would be, we would be closing effective 6 o'clock on Friday, March 13th. At that time, the state of Connecticut was not promoting distance learning at all. It was adding on days to the end of the school year. Um, we had already started the planning work in getting ready for distance learning. Our tech team, which I cannot say enough good about, uh, in the span of 24 hours coordinated the collection and distribution of over 1,100 Chromebooks in, for students in grades three through six. In the span of, of a week, uh, on Friday, March 20th, and on Monday, March 23rd, we had two days of planning, and on Tuesday, March 24th, we rolled out the distance learning plan. And the amount of collaboration that has occurred and the amount of learning that's gone on is absolutely heartwarming. Um, I would echo what the teachers say about missing the kids. Um, the daily life of Weatherfield Public Schools has dramatically changed, but our heartbeat is alive and well, and the work that our teachers are doing, our social workers, our psychologists, our nurses, principals, our assistant superintendent and superintendent, we are doing everything we can to make this as normal as possible for our kids and, and give them the best possible education that we can. So, to our teaching staff, our technology staff, administrators, thank you for everything that you've done. Uh, questions and comments, feet, please.
Hi, Michael. This is Kelly. I just wanted to make a quick, can you hear me? Am I muted? Am I good?
No, you're good.
I'm not good at technology, so I totally get it, but, um, I want to say that I, I have two kids, you know, they hug you every time they see you, but, um, they miss being in the school, but the feedback that I've gotten from my other parents and just watching, you know, the third grade and the kindergarten, I'm beyond impressed with what's going on, um, how much they're learning, how much they're doing, they're engaged, they have two different personalities, so I didn't know how this was going to shake out, but I am, you know, I am overly impressed with what's going on, and I know how much these teachers are working. Um, and furthermore, I mean, I have got warriors. I've got, the resources on the website are amazing, the, you know, the school has, I have a big third grade warrior, so I've reached out and had some questions, I get one-on-one with the teachers. I feel bad, give, you know, asking so many questions, but they've been wonderful. Everybody should be really proud of what's, what's going on here, because I can't even fathom how you guys pulled it off and continue to do so. So, thank you so much, as a parent.
Uh, Kelly, thanks for those comments. Uh, I, I agree, I think, uh, given the circumstances and the way everyone came together, I think we have a lot to be extremely proud of, and I know, uh, the good thing about this system is they don't settle for what's in front of them, we keep working on how to get better. I just had a couple really quick points that just, excuse me, I don't need answers, but in the circle you had, Sally, about the 85% engagement rate, which is, is, you know, I'm assuming from what I, from what I've heard from other districts where they have a lot more challenging demographics and, and with, among their, uh, population, that's good. That 14%, is that a reflection of at least three missed days and up, or is it, uh, I'm just trying to get an idea of what that number is. I'm sure you've broken it down, whether it's, it's purely, as one of the teachers mentioned, I've had, uh, problems when the classrooms engaging, but are they related to, uh, you know, lack of a wireless in the house or, uh, uh, supplies or, or, or other things in those general social areas? I don't need an answer, I just think, from that I don't need an answer, I just think, when that number pops up, I just, you know, what do we need, I guess, to do, obviously, to bring that up? That's one thing I'm sure you're concerned about. Uh, the other question I had is, uh, and I admit this is more for Mike, but are we evaluating our staff about the strain that they're under in terms of reaching out to these kids and, and obviously acting as, uh, you know, trying to take a temperature of how things are going in the home, which related to potential, uh, you know, uh, all sorts of issues we don't have to go into, but are, uh, uh, put a strain on the child. It could be domestic violence, it could be, you know, all sorts of things going on. Are, are people getting the help they need to kind of sort these things out when they hear them, so that when they report them, they feel that they're not snitching, but they're fulfilling their responsibilities on the reporting? And then, uh, the final one on the nurses issue, um, she mentioned, Chloe mentioned that they were looking at, uh, getting supplied up for the fall. I would think that this is something, Mike, you'll be more interested, you'll be pursuing with your peers in the state, uh, because if we're coming, if, if we do come back and there's a recurrence, uh, we're, we're going to be on the hook, obviously, to have enough protective gear and, and wipes and gloves and masks for our own people, and that's certainly a cost that we didn't bargain for in our budget. I would imagine it's something that we'd have to take to another level to see if there's going to be a state assistance for school districts to, I guess, be ready, uh, for, you know, another outbreak or whatever protocols they come up with to make sure our schools are, are obviously safe as best we can, and our, and our, and most importantly, our teachers and our students are safe. So those are the three things. I'll be quiet, I don't need answers, I just thought, an excellent presentation by everybody. I appreciate the time you took, uh, and I found it extremely important, uh, and hope people will, uh, they can watch on YouTube and, and obviously call in if they have more questions. Thanks.
Chris, just to, to one point, I just want to speak to the PPE piece, and, you know, at this point in time, we had a, a call with the Commissioner of Education this afternoon at two o'clock. Uh, no decision has been made with regard to the status of the school closures beyond May 20th. Um, so right now, we're operating under the assumption that we'll be coming back in on May 21st. Um, I will tell you that the state is looking at a regional reopening, uh, protocol. Um, this is not going to be something where I think we're just simply going to reopen, come on back in. There may be social distancing, uh, requirements that we may need to meet. Um, certainly, the issue of PPE, protective personal equipment, came up, uh, today in terms of masks, uh, the social distancing piece. Um, so these are all questions that need to be answered. Um, as you know, I meet with the Central Connecticut Health District on a weekly basis. I'll be meeting with them again tomorrow at eleven. Um, any opening or any, um, kind of re-up, if you will, to the school year will come with collaboration with the Central Connecticut Health District. We're not going to open up until we know things are absolutely safe and we have the protocols in place to make sure that we're good.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, I know that's the case. I was just also thinking about the, the additional costs.
Sure.
And, I, I, and I, I would imagine part of this, before we open up, is we're going to have to, either as the state or locally, we're going to have to do some education still with, uh, parents about why we're here. There's, believe it or not, even when I still wander around town, I still see a lot of people not doing the six, you know, foot distancing. It's better. Um, no question about it than it was three weeks ago, but I think, you know, there's still a lot of educating need to be done, especially if we're going to reopen.
Sure.
And second, I also talked to our engagement data. Uh, when we look at our engagement data, the number's at one hundred percent over the last, uh, roughly four weeks. We're somewhere in the seventy percent, um, range, uh, but knowing that kids get sick and things happen, we decided to look at students that were engaged, um, you know, up to three absences. So that fourteen percent, the students have had four or more days not engaged with learning. Um, you know, as we've heard from some of our teachers, some of our students that had some, uh, previous barriers, continue to have barriers. Um, when we meet with individual principals, uh, we know their engagement teams, and our principals have a very strong understanding of all those individual family situations, stressors, barriers, um, that are real, and are, are, you know, they all have a plan of giving them a few days, coming back. Um, again, I think as, as John said, family situations are changing weekly also.
All right.
So, um, we're, we're assured that our, our staff has a really strong handle on those families. Um, some of those barriers are larger than, um, schools can help support, but we continue to provide, um, um, supports for them. We have removed, um, the device barrier, um, even internet. Our IT staff has been working on internet solutions for families, so that part's been very successful.
Great, thank you.
Robbie, I just wanted to make a comment. We so often, through the years, have spoken of mind growth. I just think this is like a mind explosion. Um, I am in awe of what everyone has done. From Michael, from you all the way to, um, Chloe, to make sure these kids are safe, um, teachers to keep these kids motivated, and, um, parents who have bought into the fact that this is the best possible solution to a very bad situation. So I thank everybody. Thank you.
Any other comments from everyone?
Uh, I'd like to say thanks, uh, for all the hard work of everyone on the school staff, uh, and it is certainly a challenge, uh, I've got three kids and, uh, I'm working full-time. My wife is teaching and working full-time. My parents are both ninety-three, so it's, it's, you know, it's a challenge, I think, for, for everybody, uh, this present environment. And for special education, I think the, uh, the interaction with, uh, the pair is very , uh, important, uh, but there's no way to get, quite get all the structure, uh, for special needs, uh, at home. But we appreciate all the efforts from everyone.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, if I don't, obviously, we all have questions or ideas, we can give them to Sally, uh, or Mike. Uh, again, uh, for much personally, thank you for, uh, everyone that's called beyond has been doing, uh, for the kids of, of this district and for the parents of the district, and the teachers are doing a tremendous job, and a lot to be thankful for. And I appreciate you putting this together, Sally, so we have a real grasp of how, how far we've come and where we're going, so I think that's all good news. So if I don't hear any objections, I will declare this wonderful gathering adjourned this evening. Be safe.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.